The General of Immigration and all other delegates and officials, the Chairman of Area Councils, our fathers, and all very distinguished ladies and gentlemen and chairmen of the media. I welcome all of you to this town hall meeting on the protection of public infrastructure. I thank you all, but in particular, I want to thank my colleagues, the honorable Ministers of the FCT, Transportation, Aviation, Works and Housing, who have not only shown exemplary ombitment, but have tried, despite all the pressure from them to ensure that we start this town hall meeting fairly on time. I thank you all for accepting our invitation, and I look forward to a very robust interaction on this topical issue. Let me remind this gathering that the Ministry of Information and Culture launched a town hall meeting series in Lagos on April twenty fifth, two thousand and sixteen, to provide a platform for the federal government to regularly give account of its stewardship to the people and get their feedback, thus enhancing citizens' participation in governance. Today's edition is the nineteenth. Today's town hall meeting is both urgent and important because it touches on an issue that is at the very core of economic growth and national development, and also security, and that is public infrastructure. When public infrastructure is being targeted for destruction by some unpatriotic Nigerians, it calls for great concern and immediate action. Hence, our decision to organize this town hall meeting today. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, Nigeria has long suffered massive infrastructure deficit due to decades of neglect, population expansion, and the absence of maintenance culture. But since coming into office in two thousand and fifteen, the Muhammadu Buhari administration has embarked on a rapid economic growth with equity, i.e. people-centered economic management as well as prioritizing human capital development through enhanced social services and infrastructure development. This explains why the federal government deliberately adopted an inclusive development framework that spreads infrastructure to all sections of the country. Despite a drastic drop in revenues and competing priorities, especially that of tackling insecurity, the administration has invested heavily in providing infrastructure in addition to constructing and rehabilitating existing ones. However, recent times, such notable efforts of the government have been thwarted by some unpatriotic citizens through wanton destruction of critical infrastructure, thereby depriving the greater citizens for whose benefits these projects and services are provided from enjoying them. Railway tracks have been subjected to wanton destruction. Bridge railings have been removed. Manhole covers have been purified. Streetlights and other power infrastructure, oil pipelines, telecoms facilities, and critical aviation infrastructure have been damaged or stolen on a daily basis. Apart from endangering the lives of fellow innocent citizens, such unpatriotic acts take a toll on the government's limited revenue as it seeks to replace, rehabilitate, or totally reconstruct such destroyed infrastructure. On another level, there is incessant attacks on critical public facilities such as police stations and highway offices. As a matter of fact, the destruction of public infrastructure and facilities is not just vandalism. It is a form of terrorism. Removal of railway tracks can cause train derailment with deadly consequences. Tampering with aviation infrastructure endangers the lives of air passengers. Attack of police stations have left many police personnel dead. These are clearly acts of terror. And this is why we have decided to organize a series of town hall meetings to address this incessant and worsening destruction of public infrastructure and facilities. In organizing these town hall meetings, our major objectives are to create in the public mind that government property are indeed citizens' property and so must be protected for the benefit of all. Two, facilitate communities, especially those where infrastructure are located, to be conscious of the import of such and protect them. Three, expose, arrest, and prosecute all those who engage in buying purified infrastructure items along with those bringing such items here. Four, and to facilitate the larger citizenry to support the widespread campaign on the protection and ownership of public infrastructure assets, especially in railway, roads, and aviation sectors. Today's town hall meeting will be the first of a three-part series that will address vandalism of public infrastructure across the country. A similar town hall meeting will hold in Kalaba, Kostu River State, to address pipeline vandalism, while another one will be held in Maduguri, Borunu State, to address vandalization of power and telecommunications infrastructure. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, let me conclude by saying we should never forget this administration's massive investment in infrastructure since coming into office, despite the paucity of funds. It's very easy to forget now, but when this administration came into office in two thousand and fifteen, the price of crude oil, which provides eighty percent of Nigeria's budgetary revenues, ninety-five percent of foreign exchange earnings, had dropped drastically and along with it the full available to government. It is therefore a monumental achievement that this administration has to a large extent managed to bridge the deficit in infrastructure. As I always say, no government in the history of this country has done so much with so little. It is incumbent on us, therefore, to do everything within our power to stop the wanton destruction of public infrastructure and facilities. On this note, I want to once again thank all our invitees. This is wishing all of us a successful town hall meeting. I thank you.
The invitation letter to me said this was supposed to be a five-minute presentation of intervention by each ministry. So I'll try to stay within those five minutes, and it will be easier for me to do so if I adopt the protocols. I think that the Honorable Minister for Information has also in his opening remarks already given some examples of the experiences that we have had. So I'm just going to quickly try and speak to one or two matters and illustrate them with some of the slides that were being projected on the screen. Why is it important that we should have this conversation? I think that's the first thing to see. And the first point I want to make, therefore, is that our ability to grow, our ability to develop, our ability to prosper, our ability to get education, to get health care, to essentially live a good life is so tied to the quality and the quantity of infrastructure that we have. The truth is that no nation grows beyond the capacity of its infrastructure. So every little one that we have, we must optimize it. And I think that's the first point I'd like to make. So the Honorable Minister for Information has spoken about incidents of damages to bridges. And if the operator of the screen just goes to my fifth slide, slide five, I think you will see there, just to highlight, yes. Now, these are some of the bridges that have already suffered one form of damage or the other. And what's is being projected there? The first one is Otendola Bridge. There was damage to the bridge elements by fire caused by petrol laden tankers. The next one is Kara Bridge. Damage to the bridge elements against petrol tankers. Then Tamburawa Bridge in Kanu. The first two were in Lagos. Tamburawa Bridge in Kanu. Illegal mining activities that exposed all of the the pines sustaining the weight of the bridge. And in all of this, government has to respond. So the first one, the cost of repairs was two hundred and three million naira. In the second one, it was six hundred and five million plus naira. The Tamburawa Bridge cost us one point eight billion to repair a bridge we had already built. So because people want to mine sand, they expose all the members. Obalele Bridge in Lagos, it was a petrol tanker that crashed into the bridge. Apparently, its brakes failed and the bridge pillars were the best way to stop the truck. And the place exploded. It was all over the news. Then recently, a truck was actually carrying an excavator on a low bed, got to our bridge and saw that the level of cargo he was carrying was excess of the headroom. And instead of going back, he just drove through and damaged three existing bridges. And the list is long, but you see, what it does is that it just affects everybody in a very negative way. The other point to make is that all of this interference, damage to public property are actually criminal offenses. Our laws provide for them and defines range from penalties, the sanctions range from penalties or fines to terms of imprisonment on conviction for the offenses. Now, are we totally helpless? Certainly, we are not. As I've shown on this slide, we are responding. But all of these monies that we are spending could have been put to other uses. They could have bought drugs. They could have paid. They could have done so many other things instead of going to repeat to do or to rebuild what we have already built. And that is one reason I think we must have this conversation. There are other instances, and I will just quickly go through. If you will go perhaps to slide six, just quickly. So what is happening here is that the right of way of our federal highway is forty-five point seven five meters from the central line on both sides. So if you are the center of any federal highway, if you look to your left, forty-five point seven five meters to the left is our land and the same thing to the right. So if you are building in any place near there, you are actually trespassing on land. So if you see these photographs, clearly those buildings shouldn't be there. Neither should be per cruise station. These are some of the problems we are also dealing with. And of course, if you move further to slide seven, this is, please go to it. This is somebody on his own just getting on our highway when we caught them after building their own speed bump and painting it on a highway. Again, this is not only illegal and criminal on conviction, it is also a danger to other road users because this is not a municipal road where you can put speed bump. This is a federal highway. And to unsuspecting vehicles coming at the appropriate speed, if they run into this, this is an unexpected feature on our highway. So it's also a danger to life. And if we go quickly to slide ten, now, this could never have happened, especially the one on the right, a truck actually hanging on a bridge. And you see it has damaged the concrete work on the parapet there. And again, this is just illustrative of the need for all of us to demonstrate appropriate care when using all these assets. It is a shared asset. It belongs to everyone in this room. If I use it and I damage it, it is not there for the next person to use. So again, it speaks to proper training of persons entrusted to operate vehicles. And if you go on to slide eleven, now, you might have seen in the last few years that signage such as this, which are standard practice in many parts of the world, but they were absent before this administration, are beginning to emerge on our highways if you drive across. The purpose of these signages is to help commuters know how far they have traveled, how much longer they have to get to the next town, and so on and so forth. But when we started rolling them out, these were signage somewhere in Enugu State on the A three route that they just cut them off. People just cut them off and took them away. But this is only one example. Some of the things we also see is that these signage become billboards for campaigns when elections come. That is not what they are for. And so if we want to be, if there are countries in other parts of the world that we emulate, we want to be like them, we must also be ready to do what they do to make them worthy of emulation. They don't set up this kind of things and then turn them into campaign posters. So let me go on then to slide thirteen and I will very quickly after that just round up and hear the floor to my colleagues. Now, these are markets under the bridge and all of that. There was one I went to recently where on the columns supporting our bridge, somebody had actually set up shop. It was actually a politician who got the license to hire the bridge before this administration. Then he put people there. So when you get there, you will actually see signage printed in white paint, three thousand per truck, two thousand per car, and so on. So it's a parking space under the bridge. And every day, trucks go there, park, and the person collects three thousand, two thousand. When I asked them, I think they said in one place, sixty-five trucks come there a day. So the person is just living on the land, paying no tax, putting all our assets at risk. So what are we doing here? We have started a recovery of all of these sites and slowly but surely, we want to evict all trucks, all vehicles from under the bridges. That is our decision. That is the right thing to do. All of this is unlawful. So we're going to need the support, the understanding, and the collaboration of all well-meaning and right-thinking Nigerians to recover all of these things from those who put them to unlawful and improper use. Go quickly to slide fourteen and I will close on slide fifteen. Now, this is the bridge opposite the Guardian newspapers in Lagos that takes you to the airport if you are coming from Ma'atou, if you are coming from Apapa, and so on. So a truck laden with petroleum products lost control, exploded, and this was the place he thought to come and pack the vehicle. So that bridge had to be closed. Not only the damage to the bridge, which now has to be repaired. It was one of those bridges. And the cost of repairs was, I think something in the order of three hundred million or so. The work is just about to start or started last week. But apart from that, everybody who used this bridge for business, to get to work, to go home, now has to divert because we have to close it because of safety. So if you are traveling and you are going to the airport from Apapa, from all of those areas, your journey is extended by at least forty minutes because you know that you actually have to go to Ushodi to go and turn. Now, that is the cost to everybody to this economy by somebody's action. And this kind of behavior certainly must be put in check. Now go to slide fifteen and I will... Now, look at the slide to the right of the screen. This is the exit from the Tord Melan Bridge. And I was actually the one driving at night who caught this person. They were drilling it. They wanted to build an exit onto the highway. So ladies and gentlemen, I will not just run all of the slides. It's a lot. Housing, if you go on, housing to the slides on housing, manhole covers, Alajilai has told us about that. The next one will show you damage to buildings. And this is the damage to the bridge parapet. This is a property damage in Adamawa. And so on. The list is endless. And you will see see what my colleague will also share with you. So this is an important conversation to have because our collective heritage and our commonwealth is at risk by those who either do not know or who also see these assets as the appropriate objects of their anger. And this kind of conversation, I hope, will help to reverse and reduce distress. Thank you very much.
The next class is distinguished ladies and gentlemen, including my colleagues. I have a problem with the five minutes, but I'll try. Just respond to the Minister for Information and Work that are unable and may not comply with the five minutes. But maybe more than two extra minutes. The... Because it's five minutes, I will not read my address. I'll just I'll just repeat some of the things that you already know. You already know what the government is doing about railway with common knowledge that we've completed, even though it was started by the President who learned that we've completed the Kaduna Abuja railway line and the commercial activities going on there. We've completed the Tabe Wari railway line. We've also completed Lagos to Ibadan. The President will commission Lagos to Ibadan on Thursday for full commercial activities. We will commence work before the end of the month for the Kaduna-Kano railway line. So we didn't address the area, but there is a danger. I would even throw the line that others are throwing. But I'm not quantifying the material cost. What I'm quantifying will be the lives that will be lost. What I'm quantifying will be the lives that will be lost. Now, I want to say to you, and I will mention some areas. When you cut off a rail track, I was told by the, I must call his name, so that if it is wrong, people will call him. The M D O railway says it takes, if you break, if, if, if you want the train to stop at Nishroth Walks, you must stop it now, eight hundred meters before it gets to Nishroth Walks. So imagine that a driver of a rail track is driving and suddenly runs into a track that has been severed. What happens? It will derail. And if it derails, people will die. Each coach for now, in Nigeria carries eighty-five passengers. And sometimes we carry fourteen, we take fourteen coaches. Sometimes it can get to twenty, sometimes ten. So imagine if you're carrying, if you're driving a train of fourteen uh, coaches or twenty, and they are full, twenty, uh, eighty-four, eighty-five passengers per track, uh, per rail, per coach, I mean. If it derails and we lose, even if it's ten, 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 ten persons per, per coach, can we quantify how many persons that would have died? In the course of one man thinking he was making money. We're not like cars that you can stop when you see danger. You must continue. That's why if you see what transferred at uh, Itabey Wari, Itabey Wari uh, rail track. The A K K contractor, his truck broke down and then blocked the track. I don't know what he was doing there. He had to drive across the track. I, I'd say it was coming, the driver was helpless. He ran into the truck, destroyed the locomotive, destroyed some coaches. Luckily, they've not handed over to us, but we, insurance plus the man, they had to pay for it. So it's not about, it's not about the cost. It's about the lives that will be lost because of the few uh, interests that will be protected. Now, I don't want to bore you too by telling you the number of tracks that we have in the country. Maybe let me repeat this, but you know how much danger we are in. Currently, the, we have one, one ninety-three kilometer track from Lagos to Ibadan, the old, old uh, narrow gauge, which was built between eighteen ninety-eight to nineteen zero-one. You have from Ibadan to Jeba, you have from Jeba to Minna, you have from Minna to Baro. Potakot to Enugu, Enugu to Makodi, Kafancham to Joss, Kuru to Bauchi, Bauchi to Gombe, Gombe to Ede. All these are the good lines. Now we have the operational standard gauge lines that are from Abuja to Kaduna, Wari to Itabey and Lagos to Ibadan. All of them put together, one is one eighty-seven kilometers. That's Abuja to Kaduna. The Wari to Itabey is two hundred and fifty-five kilometers. And Lagos to Ibadan is about one eighty-six kilometers. Now, the last one I saw was Wari to Itabey. Fortunately, it was the main line, was this sideline that the man, the gentleman went to cut off. And they are doing it with foreign partners. In Joss, we arrested a Chinese. The Chinese company that bought those tracks from them, went to court. Court found them guilty. Ask, what is the consequence? Two hundred thousand naira. Pass the law. So I want to stress this to show you, regardless I might take some extra, extra minutes, to show you that it is just not enough to say stop. It is that there must be consequences. And two hundred thousand naira consequence is not enough. Now, what, what are the economic consequences? There are these, those who use our uh, trains for uh, our reason for cargo, uh, this in free services, for free services. They include Lafarge cement, flour mules, bonded container traffic for I C N L and A P M T,
More expensive. So what is the way going forward? The laws are there, as was indicated by the honorable Minister of Books and Housing. But we have to all agree as a people that we need enforcement and we need to strengthen the laws. And then also, we need to understand that this is not a small crime. Because criminality grows gradually. You could even say in a modular form, a person who will steal a cable at night risking his or her life would obviously graduate to other serious crimes. So it's very important that going forward, security agencies should really consider that as very important. In Abuja, for over five years, we have banned what we call Babamboela. These are the scavengers you see moving around. But we have simply not been able to enforce, because nobody is willing to enforce. A Babamboela will be moving around with a sack of items, supposedly trash. But I bet you once in a while, when you open that sack, you'll be surprised what you'll see. But at the junction, the Babamboela will pass, there will be a police vehicle there. The policeman will just allow him to pass, because as far as he is concerned, this is not a crime, it's minimal. So I think that's very, very important. If you look at the Abuja Light Rail system, so far in Phase One and Three A, we have a total of about eighty-eight kilometers of track. But even that has been vandalized. In some sections of the system, cables were cut and the bolts that keep the slippers on the track were also vandalized. And we all know that no related system will operate without signaling and control. And these cables are meant to provide power to the signaling system. During the NSA's protest last year, we seen cases where entire communities vandalized public property within their environment, removing roofs, removing doors, even chipping away and removing the metal frames. So how do you handle a community like this? So what we've tried to do is to engage with the judicial system. We've had a lot of arrests, but like was mentioned by the honorable Minister of Transportation, you go there and the fines are minimal. As a matter of fact, there was a time, we went to a market and identified so many of the manhole covers. With collaboration with the Nigerian Civil Defense Corps, who are also, who have demanded of protective public infrastructure as one of their objectives. We went to court. These are the samples, these are the exhibits. It took probably one and a half hours to get a conviction. In the interim, we ended up not using the manhole covers so that we could replace where they were stolen and they were there. So later, we just decided that whenever we make arrests, we'll keep all these. And maybe I should keep quiet. So having said that, going forward, I think we need to really work on the laws and we need to enforce and I think we all need to appreciate that it affects all of us and it costs a lot of money. For instance, what we are trying to do with these manholes I just mentioned to you, is to try to see how we can get 2.6 billion to have them repaired. But 2.6 billion is going to affect our other Angolan projects, which is going to affect you and I in health, in education, in transportation and in security. So I thank you very much for listening.
My big brother, Allahallah Muhammad, has a habit. And that habit always affects me. He decided to make me speak after a senior advocate of Nigeria, whose duty is just to be speaking and to earn money for doing that. And really, he speaks very well. And also after an elected speaker, who has been speaking for eight years on behalf of the US people, and decided to speak for our campaign and God has elected. And again, after my elder brother, who actually taught me how to speak, the Federal Minister for the Federal Capital Training. So, Allahallah, you have achieved your wish. And you have left me with nothing to speak. But I'll just try to speak and I hope that I will be able to give at least three minutes of some sense. Civil aviation. When people speak of civil aviation, they think of tunnel buildings. Yes, they are part of the infrastructure and they are part of the architecture of civil aviation. But tunnel buildings are just tunnel buildings, really. What matters more in civil aviation is how very well, safely and securely you depart from point A and land at point B. This is of paramount importance. And the Buhari civil aviation have just been doing that. We've been looking at all those critical things that will make you fly from point A to B safely and securely. Unfortunately, we have our own huge portion, huge portion of vandalism of our critical equipments. An aviation infrastructure is actually a critical national security asset. Because with maximum respect, one mile long road leads to a neighborhood, one mile long runway leads to everywhere. You can actually get out of Kalawa and coast havoc in faraway Cabella in Australia. It links and connects the world. And if you see the importance of the infrastructure, those remote equipment that are in our bushes are so very important that they make our walk safe and they make you and I safe. If you make one deviation degree in an operation, over 200 mile or 300 mile or 1,000 mile long, it's catastrophic. I'll just give you just one example. I'm not going to even be speaking to somebody in Inugu. I went on a tour, walking tour. There is no one single South Eastern Nigerian who came to my office and asked me to please look at Inugu runway. No. Since I became Minister, I went on my own, on a duty tour. I saw how the runway was, it was so badly damaged, there's a death trap. You land at a very high speed, 240 kilometers or more, depend on the aircraft, you touchdown at that speed and you touchdown on a pothole. So I went to Mr. President, "Mr. President, I have a problem. You must speak with Asha something and you must look for money and you must give me the money and I must fix Inugu." And he gladly allowed. Aviation money is very little, because we are competing with health, education, water, FCT and so on. So we're not that very important, quote unquote. But he allowed that ten billion. We went there, we fixed Inugu. Whilst we are doing that, one cantankerous individual decided to just go and demolish our fans and allow the airport to be so bare. And of course, we decided to show him how not to willfully damage public infrastructure. We didn't allow that. And people and citizens just kept quiet. I remember the E S crash in Kano. One crash, it landed on Gomaja. Those people now have been to airport, they now have been to airport. Something went wrong and he crashed on tour a thousand people. If one doctor makes one mistake in one operation, he kills one person and save himself. If a pilot make one mistake in one operation, he kills thousands, including himself. The gentleman sitting down there in suit and white shirt is D G of Naimat. He's the least hard of our agencies, for example. Because of wind shear, which is the sudden change of direction and speed of air, we had a solusal crash. Everybody knew what happened. Those equipment that are tell us that there is wind shear on this runway and we should avoid it for the next ten minutes are being vandalized. So it's another solusal waiting to happen if they continue. This critical infrastructure, they are not seen, they are not airport tunnel buildings with toilets, with air conditioner, because as complained, with lifts, they are very important, lifting is important, toilet is important, air conditioner is important, your kill is important where you go, but what is more important is to keep you safe and to keep you secure. We've seen nine eleven. We used to just pass through airports. But now nine eleven has shown us the importance of an aviation infrastructure, how to be safe. We now all naturally, literally go naked in airports, because they want to search and see whether you're carrying bomb or not. During the NSA's riot, they went to destroy our VOR in Illorin and our VOR in Kalawa and so on and so forth. Those VOR are very high frequency omnidirectional radio range. They tell us how far away you are from the airport, they tell us the exact position where the airport is, they tell us quite a number of things and they destroyed. Imagine an aircraft carrying 500 people in distress and he doesn't know where to go and the VOR is destroyed. It's disaster. And if you go and do it willfully, the aircraft may even fall on your cousin or uncle or even mother. It's a serious business, we shouldn't allow it. We should test them. And I agree with my colleagues who spoke and they said, "There is no consequence." I have been staying with Muhammadu Buhari and the reason why is right when he was military leader. He decreed that if you willfully damage public infrastructure, 25 years is the minimum. If you destroy our pipelines, if you destroy our road, you burn our bush. You remember the time when they used to go and open transformer and pick my cure and make money, as they said, and transform oil? Twenty-five years, that's what Buhari said at that time. One percent growth in Nigeria's GDP is 4.5 billion US dollars. So aviation is a very serious business and people are destroying our equipment and we're just watching and we're incapacitated because of our laws. I think, I think now the national security architecture understood and they have underscored the importance of national security assets and our infrastructure assets. So they should step up and remember the National Assembly should quickly enact those laws to ensure that people are punished maximally. Shouldn't be allowed. It should not be allowed. It should not be allowed. I have looked at it several years and I found, where do we actually go wrong? What is the problem? One of my colleagues said it's a Nigerian thing. That should not be. But ladies and gentlemen, I honestly want to remind us with what President Muhammadu Buhari has said, that our generation of Nigerians are those to come, only Nigeria are secondary. Thank you very much.
Honorable Ministers, permit me to stand on the established protocols. Here I am, Senator Binaz Dawd Yaro. I'm here to represent the distinguished Senate President. And he gave me a written speech to read, very short. But before I go into that, I would like to perhaps comment on some of the issues that were raised, especially to do with the National Assembly and the need to make laws or to amend laws to provide stiffer capital punishment for vandalization of critical infrastructure. I would say that the Ninth National Assembly has proven to work closely with the executive and I cannot recall any executive bill that has been presented to the National Assembly that has not been passed. So my comment here is to say that the relevant ministries should quickly propose the law they want, whether it is amendment, fresh law, whatever. And I can assure you that the National Assembly will process it speedily. With that, I would like to read the remarks by the President of the Senate, Distinguished Senator Ahmed Ibrahim Lawan, PHDC on a distance hall meeting, on the need to address the destruction of public infrastructure organized by the Federal Minister of Information and Culture on Monday, June 7, 2021. It is a great pleasure to be a part of this important event, to discuss the topical issue of the destruction of public infrastructure across the country. This new town is unfortunate considering how long it took to build many of them and against the background of scarce resources. It is common knowledge that infrastructure, infrastructures are the bedrock of advancement and the pedestal around which institutions function. They provide the ground for sustainable, for sustainability, given the fact that they are planned to be long-lasting projects. Infrastructures are also supposed to serve the people, while many indices of development are hinged on the quality or degree of available infrastructure. It is therefore inconceivable to imagine people ruining infrastructures like police stations, railway trucks, electricity installations, the offices of the Independent National Electric Commission, INEC, and other facilities. We reckon that citizens might have apprehensions, which will however appreciate that concerns can be resolved through patience, dialogues and representations as envisaged in a democracy. It is a nobler road to use these mechanisms of resolutions rather than destruction, considering how difficult or even impossible it is to recover many of these structures that took years to acquire. Nation building is an enduring course of fostering understanding, which may come through agreements and disagreements. For a multi-ethnic nation like ours, we cannot expect to agree all the time, which is why our task should always be to engage in meaningful discussions towards agreements. Our nation has great potential, but we cannot harness this in an atmosphere of endless misunderstandings, arson, looting and strife. It is time to appeal to ourselves to tow the path of peace, acknowledging our roles as stakeholders in the evolution of a great nation. We have to see ourselves as citizens with a collective responsibility to protect what we have, so we can also protect our future. The regular saying that this nation belongs to all of us and we should jointly work towards its continuous greatness is appropriate in this circumstance. Together, we can do better. I commend the Minister of Information for this initiative and I'm assured that the outcome of this town hall meeting will help us find a lasting solution to the problem of destruction of our infrastructure. God bless you all. God bless the Federal Republic of Nigeria. Thank you very much.
I'm a stakeholder. To know very well that I'm a stakeholder, let me give you a very simple scenario, then from there we continue. All the engineers in this house and all those heading engineering organizations, please stand up. All the engineers in the house and all those heading engineering organizations, please stand up.
Engineers, where are you?
And people heading engineering organizations, including His Excellency Abathine Raji Fashola, including Right Honorable Rotimi Amechi, including Right Honorable Sebika, including the Honorable Minister of Abuja and the Honorable Minister of Information and Digital Economy has stood up. So let me see who is not an engineer in this house.
Okay, please go straight to the issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have to create awareness first.
Thank you for the creation of awareness.
Your Excellency, sit down, please. We have heard from everybody, what is the way forward?
Tell us.
Security. It has been said, infrastructures are very costly. I'm an engineer, I knew what it is and those in government knew also what it is. But of recent, we have been getting a lot of distractions. A lot of people are destroying infrastructure facilities. Why? All of us want to go to Dubai, all of us have been to America or some places. Where do we want to go to those places? What makes it different from Nigeria? What makes it different? Please, we need to have a stop at this nonsense. It's total nonsense, we cannot continue. The force are very, very scarce and they are competing demands. First, we need to look at our community. Community, you must take responsibility. You must take responsibility, because this thing passes through your community, which means NOA, orientation agency, you need a lot of work, a lot of work and sophistication. People need to know, government facilities are our own facilities, are our own facilities, we need to own them. A policy of each one, guide one, must come. You must guide one public facility in your vicinity. Don't go outside your vicinity, just in your vicinity. Everybody must guide one. Currently, as I'm talking to you now, we are having, I'm running a course in the head office of the Nigeria's of Engineers, that is, we are training people with FIRS, that these facilities in comparison, in conjunction with Kwame Nkrumah University of Ghana, on these road issues, because it's becoming an issue, distractions, we cannot continue. And then lastly, touts. Airports, there are so many touts in the airport, because they know what is on ground, they also take part in destroying it. Please take care of your touts in the airport. We don't need trolley drawer in the airport. Everywhere you go to airport, people draw their trolleys. We don't need them and they are part of the problem in the airports. In Abuja, yes, people filtered away manhole covers. The Minister has said it very aptly, as I'm talking to you now, Right Honorable Minister, we are working on replacing all these metal manholes with plastics. Maybe that will solve the problem. And as I'm talking to you now, we are at a stage, we have taken a product in Lagos is under test. Once we pass it, we'll approach you. It's a concern to all of us, because metal, they turn it into so many things. Now let's try plastics, it has been used in other places. We can try it here in Nigeria. We are working on it, we'll come to your office very soon. Railway, yes. First to start with, the tickets in your railways are issues. That is the first point. We have so many touts in the railway. Tickets are no sold. Why do countries sell these lines, this ticket online? What is the problem with it? We buy things online, why can't we buy tickets online? There is issue, there are so many people there and they are causing a lot of problems. Please eliminate them.
My name is Suliman Kampo Abu Bakr. I'm the Galagima of Keshi. I'm representing His Royal Highness Al-Hadij Smaya Mahamad's Athentasy. He has asked me to tender his apology. He is receiving his second dose of Afrika Tain, we are seeing today with his council members, so that has made you not be here. But he has asked me to make his remarks on this gathering. In the first instance, he said, "The community that should be proper massive sensitization of communities across the country and this community should be made to own all these public assets that are within their communities." And that before henceforth and before any federal government asset is set or is located in any state, the state government should be made to make a written commitment to protect those national assets. And in failure to do that, the state government should be charged for allowing those assets to be vandalized and the community leaders should be properly sensitized. Also, in every community in this country today, we have vigilante groups and these vigilante groups should be allowed to work in synergies with all security agencies in the country, because like these artists are just listed and His Royal Highness, the Secretary of the Kise, the traditional rulers are custodians of all national and local assets. And because of their closeness to the community, they have and they are more respected and they leave the community little more to them. So there should be massive sensitization across the country for proper ownership of these public assets. People should be made to know that these assets are, it's just like personal individual assets. So they should own all these assets. So in case the state government refuses to, you know, protect this project, the state government should be charged and in due course, if such is done, they should be charged and should be relocated to another place. These are some of the short remarks that His Royal Highness asked me to make. Thank you very much.
Let's talk about employment. Six out of 10 Nigerians will tell you because I'm unemployed, that's why I'm involved in this issue of maybe vandalism of the world. And I think the federal government has been trying their best in areas of employment. I think they should do more about this. The area of public reorientation, enlightenment and awareness, support what the others have said. And I want to say something about grassroots mobilization, because in Nigeria, we know the numbers of languages that we speak and definitely our languages are very important itself. And when you are communicating to me and you are speaking my language, I think I will understand better than you speaking in grammar. So I think our languages is very, very important as this time of it is going around the country. There is also provision of adequate security, like what they said, if you have a national asset, let there be good security for this. There is enforcement of law. I'm sorry to say, the National Assembly needs to do more. If you have legislative members, you should bring up ideas on how to secure our public assets. Then there should be proper good maintenance culture. This has to do in the areas of the governments and with the citizens. Also, I want to talk about this area of Napola or what we call it in Abuja. Napola, thank you. Napola, sorry. So what I'm just trying to say about this is that, in Abuja, sir, there's the Minister, the area of refugees, they have it, it's just too not encouraging, it's just too bad. You are saying that we don't have these people, we still have them. But the funniest thing is that after taking these refugees, they will drop it wherever they like. So I think there's city need to do more about this. Thank you very much.
The part that requires stiffer punishment, but with that scouring vandalism, I don't seem to support that, because we have had punitive or stiff capital punishment for Amrabat, they still have Amrabat. My question would be, why we not deploying technology? You cannot possibly have policemen mining every of these critical infrastructure. And we're already being informed today about the amount of money that we spent to replace all these vandalized equipment. Those money is put together, we can deploy technology to identify, to monitor and to avoid that. And luckily, we have been amidst a distinguished Honorable Minister of Communication and Digital Economy to assist us in that regard. So my question is, why we not deploying technology? You cannot have policemen all over the place, so let's deploy technology. Thank you very much.
The total passengers per annum of Ghana, total passengers of all the airports, total passengers is 450,000 per annum. 450,000 per annum, about half a million. The total passengers before Covid in Nigeria is 80 million. We grew that passenger number when we came in 2015, from 80 million to 80 million. So we are about 35 times there in Ghana. So what works for them might not necessarily work for us with our peculiarities and our uniqueness. But it's good to drive our country to country, so we can see where we can improve. And thirdly, I assure you that we will improve. But the challenge in rural Nigeria actually also is in that 926,766.
nine hundred and twenty six thousand seven hundred and sixty square kilometers of land with two hundred million people, half the size of West Africa. Thank you very much.
Not only have we shared the problems, we have also received very enthusiastic responses about options. And it would not be, in my view, a one solution response. So just as we are having this town hall meeting, our ministry is also committed to improving on public enlightenment. So we are preparing some data, some material, working with information management companies to help create an enlightenment inform media material, which we will present shortly. Our other response, which I have shared with you, is to also replace as many of the damaged items as possible. And somebody made an allusion to maintenance culture. I hold the view very strongly that maintenance is not a culture, it is an economy. And we must consciously open up that economy.
Presentations are simply compelling. Example, damage to just one bridge alone in Kano will cost over one point eight billion to repair. The sheer number of damages done to rail tracks in the northwest, northeast and north central in particular, and the eastern part, is simply shocking. What about the dangers posed to rail passengers? In their city alone, we've been told that over twenty five thousand manholes and other infrastructure tools have been removed and have to be replaced. The funds that will be used to replace the covers and the other things, I'm told is about two point six billion, if I had the Royal Minister very well. This is money that could have been used for other services. Then come to aviation, the aviation infrastructure is very critical to national security. The scenario painted by the Horrible Minister of Aviation is serious. Imagine the danger posed by damage to V O R or windshield equipment, which are being tampered with regularly in some of our airports. The Excellencies, Distinguished Ladies and Gentlemen, I'm not sure if a town hall meeting is actually more urgent than this one at this time. The idea of modernization of public infrastructure has implications not just for human lives, but also for resources and for the growth and development of the country. The message that came out clearly from these presentations are many. There are many. One is that this, that the consignment ministry should work with the National Assembly to come up with a strong legislation that will prescribe very steep punishments for offenders. As has been shown that the absence of very steep sanctions has unwittily and completely wanted modernization of public infrastructure. Of course, the need for communal ownership of this infrastructure has also come out very strongly. Fortunately, we have the representative of the Senate President who just left us and before he left, that actually assured us of his speedy treatment if any law is proposed for legislation. I have no doubt that the relevant ministries will work on this issue of legislation speedily. On our part at the base of the social and culture, I can assure you all that working with our agencies, we will continue and we shall embark on a massive sensitization of Nigerians on this very important issue. As I've said, we have two more town hall meetings dedicated to the issue of protecting public infrastructure, one in Kalaba and the other in Maduguri. May I very sincerely thank all those who have made suggestions on how to stop this modernization, especially the President of the Senate and the President of the Nigerian Society of Engineers, who has raised the possibility of using plastic covers for the manholes. We need to continue to think out of the box to stop this wanton destruction. Another suggestion is that we should deploy technology to solve the problem. This is also noted. Our concerned Nigerian suggested that we take this issue to fake. Let me say that it has been our practice to send a memo to fake after every town hall meeting, either in form of a note or in form of a memo, and this one will not be different. I just showed that you might be the dangers posed by damages to windshield equipment. Finally, I want to add my contribution with the words of the Horrible Minister of Works and Housing, that this may not be a peculiar Nigerian problem or we must have a general response to it. Once again, I thank the panelists, my colleagues, honorable ministers who have graced this occasion, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, all the invitees, and I wish you all a safe trip back to destination. I'm sure that the Parliament Secretary will thank you more fully and deeper than I have thought. Thank you very much.